We are recording.
Thank you. Are we ready to go, everyone?
I am.
All right. As long as trustee Romus is ready to go, let's all of us get rolling with this this evening.
He's the troublemaker.
This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, January 6th, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And just a reminder, anyone coming forward to speak, please speak directly into the microphone, provide your name and address, so we know who you are and for the public record. All right. So at this time, I would look for a motion to approve the evening's agenda.
I move to approve this evening's agenda.
Trustee Romus has offered a motion to approve the evening's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
And I have a second from trustee Andrews. Thank you. So at this time, we have a motion to approve the agenda, and that motion has been seconded. Are there any other questions or discussion with regard to the evening's agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the evening's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. The motion carries this evening. We are six, six to zero. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Okay. Item number five this evening, always public appearances, this is that point in the agenda. For anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to an item not on the agenda, be aware, we are not able to take action on that this evening, but we could refer back to staff for additional work. Is there anyone in the audience who is here to speak to an item not on the agenda? No one. All right. With that being said, we will move on to item number six. Item number six this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the previous minutes of the village board dated December 16th, 2024. The item B, November 2024, fire report. Item C, temporary Class B picnic license for On Broadway Incorporated for ale on the trail at Barkhouse and Waterfall Preserve, 2024, Lakeview Drive, Swamaco, Wisconsin, 54173, on February 1st, 2025. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt or accept the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Romus has offered a motion to approve the evening's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second, he even asked me before.
And we have a second from trustee Eckert. Thank you. Any other further comments or questions on the consent agenda this evening? All those in favor of approving this evening's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Our motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Item number seven this evening, item 7A, is a request from Tykor Built, Inc. for a minor PDD amendment for a reduced side yard setback on the north end of the proposed condominium development located on the west side of Velp Avenue, 400 feet south of Riverside Drive. Zoning Administrator Dunks, if you would.
Thank you. The modifications to the Vicry Meadows Condominium plot was approved by the board back in June of 2024. That basically took it from the, the five buildings, three four unit and two six unit. Due to stormwater changes in our regulations, it, it had used part of that building number five, so we switched it to four six unit buildings. And, and then in August of 24, the village board approved a modification to a water easement through that property. At the completion of that, that moved the water main between the buildings, the two northernly buildings. Apparently, the site plan was modified prior to that easement. That pushed the northern building about four feet to the north with a six-foot side yard setback. Our code would require the 10-foot. Staff was not aware of that change in that. The water main was installed. We can't shift the building without further modifying that water easement and shifting everything back four feet to the south. That's going to be problematic. All of the laterals, all the plumbing and everything has been installed into what would be the mechanical rooms and whatnot for these four condominium units. Most of that would have to be moved because we'd be shifting all four buildings to the south. That was mainly reviewed by Public Works for that relocation, and they'd have no reason to look at the zoning setbacks and whatnot and have ever caught that. Again, all the work related to the relocations and any laterals has been completed. So we're looking to modify the PDD to allow for that six-foot side yard setback per the site plan. It's only a small portion of that northern building that sits at an angle to that side yard, but it is in violation of what our current code is, so we'd like your, your blessing on modifying that PDD to allow for that six-foot side yard setback.
How close is that to the property line?
It'll be six feet.
Oh, okay.
And who's on the other, whose property is on the other side?
It's actually the home, the first home directly to the west of Rustik. It's not Rustik's property. They wrap around Rustik on the south side. They were notified.
They were notified?
They were notified. Okay.
Did they have any opinion on that?
I've heard nothing from them, so I don't see them here, so I don't believe they had an opinion.
Another solution would be to shorten that end? So the actual building itself, right? Or is that, that dash line just six feet the whole way? The phantom line, I should say.
Is.
So the, the six feet, is that represented by the phantom line? Is that
Yes.
a six-foot parallel with the property line the entire way?
Yes.
So 10 feet would actually be most of that right-hand building?
Most of it is within that 10-foot setback.
Just the back corner.
It's just the back corner. Could the building be modified? Possibly. All state approvals and everything for this, you know, off, all six units or all six, well, I'm sorry, all four buildings are under one state approval. They could have to jump through new architectural plans and state review if that's what you chose to have them do. I don't know how that's going to affect, you know, could just affect one unit, but it's going to get quite a bit smaller.
Are there other questions for Mr. Dunks? Zoning Administrator Dunks, rather? No?
Nope.
It's not, it's not going to be a buildable area, I don't believe, on that property to the north. I think it's about 70 feet wide that goes in there.
What, 70 feet wide?
The portion of property between this property line and Rustik's property.
Oh.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we can certainly entertain a motion. I'd like to offer a motion to approve the request by Tykor Built LLC to modify the PDD site plan for Vicry Meadows Condominium, as stated.
Second.
And I have a second from trustee Andrews. Any other further questions or discussion on this or the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right. Item 7B this evening is a request from trustee Neto to discuss Ticks Harbor Lights Temporary Structure. Zoning Administrator Dunks, if you would.
I recuse myself from this.
You certainly may. If you are going to testify or if you have comments, then yes. So for the record, trustee Neto has recused himself from this item.
All right, thank you. An outdoor patio was constructed at Ticks Harbor Lights. I believe that was in the summer of 2022. Near the completion of that, discussion began on a permanent roof over that patio. Per the Wisconsin Commercial Building Code, this would be a regulated structure needing to meet all commercial building requirements, which includes bathrooms. If fire suppression was needed, those types of, you know, based on occupancy loads and whatnot. The main concern was the toilet facilities. That would mean, need to be addressed, additional occupation or occupancy of that structure. The existing bar didn't have the capacity within, to meet those additional needs. It would be difficult to modify that bar to add additional bathrooms within the existing footprint. They are limited to the amount of improvement they can do before they have to meet all floodplain requirements, which would require that structure to be elevated between three and four feet. Fill requirements and whatnot would also have to be considered. That wasn't a feasible option. Adding in addition would put those bathrooms, again, four feet higher than the existing, which would be, create issues for use within that structure. If he's doing improvements, you know, ADA compliance would have been one of the things that would have been considered, whether it's for the tavern or for the patio. The patio wouldn't have been quite as difficult to, to meet, but it still would be four feet higher than the whole structure. So that was not looked at as an option. He did jump through some hoops. We did the PDD amendment to allow this, the structure to be built as a open-air structure. We went through variants to allow the open-air structure to be built below floodplain regulations. And we also ran it through health and safety as an open-air structure. Just to get their input on either Joe or myself allowing this as a temporary use structure. That was the only other option. That option in the commercial code allows municipal building official and/or the fire chief to approve a temporary use for up to 180 days. One of the conditions of that, and Joe and I both approved this, fire chief Bertler and myself signed the letter that approved it for temporary use prior to him pulling the permits to actually construct the roof. And one of our conditions was the 180 consecutive days. We did not feel that there was a, a way to efficiently monitor this if we just pick and choose which days it would get used. And again, it's an open-air structure. It shouldn't be enclosed, whether it's with plastic or whatnot. And, you know, the use of temporary heaters and whatnot for that now become a concern from a fire hazard and from possible CO issues and whatnot. Somebody backing into that, that hot unit, I mean, we're in a place that consumes alcohol. You know, it just doesn't seem safe to be using torpedo heaters. So at this point, Joe and I don't see any viable alternative to the 180 consecutive days. Thank you.
I was reading on here, let's see, this timeframe may not exceed 180 days, except that the official may grant extensions for demonstrated cause.
In my opinion, demonstrated cause would be if we issued this temporary use for somebody that was building a new structure and the completion of that structure was delayed, maybe we give them another 30 days or something of that. If we had, say, a pandemic that interrupted 60 days of their use, we could grant them another 60 days. Issues like that, as an annual, I don't think there's a demonstration for continued.
Maybe not an annual, but how about the NFL Draft? Because he would, he has to, he has to start it early, which would kick off his six months, which would, then he would have to end early. He'd probably be starting early next year, earlier than he normally.
Again, as an open-air structure, is it really without any heat or whatnot within it? Is it going to be?
Do you intend to use it for the NFL Draft?
Could I just get a clarif, before we start asking questions, just a quick clarification, just because I'm not sure on this. So Administrator Kaker, when we have a board member, a trustee in this case, who has recused himself from the discussion on this and voting on this, he is allowed though to serve as, because this is particular to his establishment, correct me if I'm wrong, he is allowed to sit on the other side and take questions from the board, correct?
That's appropriate.
That's appropriate. Okay. Please do.
Do you intend to use it for the NFL Draft?
I do.
Would you typically, you probably wouldn't typically be starting that early. So you wouldn't want to start your consecutive days usually that early.
No.
But in the particular case of the NFL Draft, you could use that couple extra weeks?
Exactly. And when it comes down to heaters, if you put a tent out there, you're still using a heater to keep a tent warm. And that is totally within the village ordinances. So if I put a tent up for the NFL Draft, there's going to be a heater. So the hoblab out of heater being used, it's going to be in a tent. We have special circumstances in Swamaco.
So demonstrated cause could be NFL Draft?
I was wondering, I was going through, because when we discussed the NFL Draft, the board, it was my understanding that as trustees, we agreed not to make any change specific to the NFL Draft at that time, and instead relied upon our permit process to be able to vet those certain requests on a case-by-case basis. When I started to look at what that permit process looks like, I'm wondering if, in this particular case, would this qualify as a special event? And therefore, the special event application would be the, the specific to, say, the NFL Draft and would not be the trigger to the 180 days.
Would that depend on the location of the event?
Yes.
So because the location of the event would be under that temporary structure, the consecutive days would start there?
Well, it's a, it's a permanent structure with temporary use based on the state guidelines. So even if you allowed him, it still triggers that 180 consecutive days.
I guess I would probably challenge that interpretation, and especially based on this application I'm looking at here for the special event. I mean, maybe it's in here and I'm just missing it, but I don't see where it states that. The location, the only thing that's specific here is the fact that we don't allow tents in the village parks.
Correct.
But it doesn't speak about anything with regards to the temporary structure. It doesn't refer to any of those.
It's not a temporary structure. It's still a permanent structure. We're in two different.
But the structure itself isn't even a part of this application, is what I'm saying. Those questions are not part of this application.
I don't know what that application looks like, so I haven't seen if he's got one out there for.
I'm just wondering if maybe this would.
What is the application that you're privy to that the rest of us are not?
This is what's on our website.
Oh, this is.
Well, just a general application.
It's the village Swamaco application for a special event.
Okay.
And I was wondering if that could be something that, I mean, otherwise, what is the permit process that the board would be, be able to rule on or vote on in those case-by-case basis that we were talking about when we talked about the NFL Draft?
You could easily, within the provisions of that special event, approve a tent for use as part of that special event. The issue is this is a structure under the commercial code, which grants that authority to the building official or the fire chief to approve for, for the 180 days. We have not had a request brought forward for this. We have heard that it was for an ice fishing derby that was going to occur in January.
From who?
It's out there. I don't, it's, it's been out there. But that's what you wanted to do. I don't know.
Those four-wheelers are falling through the ice in front of my bar right now.
Well, right now, yes. That doesn't mean it wasn't a thought when things were starting to freeze.
No. I have the permits for going through the DNR for an ice fishing derby if we ran one.
So my comments, my comments are only specific to, I mean, not necessarily to your bar in this particular situation, but more broadly, on the sense that it was my understanding the board was approving the fact that we were going to be allowing potential exceptions to certain alcohol rules for the NFL Draft, but only by that permit act, permit process.
But this, this technically.
Was discussed on that October 21st meeting.
This technically is not related to alcohol. This is related to the use of this structure. We do not consider the fact that there's going to be alcohol or not within this structure when Joe and I signed that original agreement.
Okay, so the permit process we were talking about for the NFL Draft was only geared towards the use of alcohol or the consumption of alcohol in sales.
And the permit would be an amendment to their liquor license.
Okay. And we, so can you help me understand where that permit is, where that permit process is? Because I couldn't find it.
So the amendment to the liquor license, we do have a form.
Okay.
They complete. It's a $25 fee for the publication. And then what happens is it goes as a legal notice, then put on the village board agenda, and then they come before you to tell you exactly what they're looking to amend with the site plan and some details as far as what they're looking to accomplish.
Okay, okay.
So as an example, Oktoberfest, Station One came forward with, you know, a delineation for Oktoberfest where they could have an outside beer garden. That's an example, correct?
Correct. And that wasn't an issue because we weren't talking about a structure and then running into those issues with that structure, right?
Right. It's, they didn't have a temporary structure that they were looking, it, it didn't fall under the 180 days. They're really, they're really different. So we, we have another one on here. We had one just tonight where On Broadway was requesting a temporary liquor license.
I saw that, yes.
At Barkhouse, and it's not the same, but it's somewhat similar. It's a, it doesn't involve a structure. What this does is this involves a, a temporary structure. And the reason that it's temporary is because to make it permanent, which would be obviously the ideal for Mr. Neto and his bar, you would have to install additional bathroom facilities, ADOA compliant, and because of its proximity to the water, you'd have to raise the entire building by four feet, none of which is really feasible.
Right.
So the alternative is, let's put in a temporary structure. The temporary structure then is governed by the commercial, the State of Wisconsin Commercial Code. So the State of Wisconsin Commercial Code delineates, you can use that for 180 days, therefore making it a temporary structure. The State of Wisconsin Commercial Code designates our fire chief and designates our zoning, not your, designate.
Village building official.
Village, village building official, designates those two individuals to determine what that 180 days looks like in their, from their perspective, 180 days to not make it consecutive, but to make it 180 days throughout the year. Somebody would have to monitor that and be, you know, keep track of that. That creates some issues. So the actual authority that Mr. Dunks and Chief Bertler have is actually through the commercial code from the State of Wisconsin. This board cannot take that away.
No.
What this board can do is this board can look at Chief Bertler and it can, Mr. Dunks can say, hey, we disagree with your decision on this. You know, please find employment elsewhere.
We can, we can enact stronger restrictions. We can go beyond the statute, but we can't go less.
We cannot go less than the statutes. So, and the other, you know, other things to consider on this is, so, I'm sorry, go ahead. That was just.
No, 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 I was done. I was.
I just, I just think here it says you can, if there's demonstrated cause. And the NFL Draft would be that.
Nobody has brought forward any paperwork requesting any extensions to that 180 days. There's been talk about the consecutive side of it being the issue. And I don't think myself or Chief Bertler is going to go away from that consecutive days.
I, I don't think, I talked to Dave Stefan today too, and I don't, I think it is consecutive. But.
It's all over the, you know, you've got some that are saying it's consecutive. The state statute says 180 days. I have a few officials that have interpreted that to 180 days, period, over the life of the structure. We haven't gone that far. I mean, and it was, they have asked the state to clarify this and, and it was brought up for clarification and it was rejected along with other code changes last year. It just wasn't acted on, I guess, is, is more, wasn't rejected. But it was actually brought forward to clarify that, and they wanted to clarify it as 180 consecutive days. But the state chose not to look at that last year.
Can we, as a board, grant an exception for demonstrated cause?
You, as a board, cannot. Joe and I can look at it, discuss it. If we choose to bring it to health and safety for their blessing also, we have that, that choice. But it is directly governed by myself and Chief Bertler.
So your concern about the winter months is buildup of carbon monoxide, potentially from a heating system, and additional fire dangers?
Yes, that's part of my concern. I don't know what Mr. Bertler's concerns are, but all of the approvals were for an open-air shelter. If you close off these windows, it's no longer an open-air shelter. So what does that bring into all the other parts of this? Your variance was open-air shelter, your PDD amendment was open-air shelter.
But your concern on, on the danger side involves then enclosing that shelter the rest of the way? Just focusing on the danger, is that your concern as well?
It states 180 days. You know, our interpretation was consecutive. And typically, in my past experience, I do a lot of inspection type stuff in Door County, and they would use this for temporary structures in Door County, open up, you know, April 1st and close October 1st for this type of use. So they knew, there was a firm start date and a firm end date. That was kind of, my, in my dealings, kind of the state's theory behind that is use for the summer months.
This was mainly created for the wedding barns, for haunted houses, and for things of that nature that are, you know.
I'm just trying to get down.
Seasonal.
I'm just trying to get down to the bottom line of your concern for the public health and safety is that it's potentially dangerous to have that because of buildup of carbon monoxide and fire hazards. Because of the, because the act would be enclosing the structure during those periods. If the, the structure wasn't enclosed and wasn't heated, that one concern, regardless of the 180 days, okay, that one concern would go away?
If, I'm sorry.
If it wasn't enclosed.
If it wasn't enclosed, you know, then, yeah, it's another consideration, you know?
Yeah. So.
Do, or reasonable, however they word that, for the extension for demonstrated cause, maybe a one-time, but if it's going to happen every single year for one event or another, is it demonstrated cause or is it sheer profit?
The part I struggle with on this is I understand what you're saying, that it was approved as a temporary building with 180 days. I get that part, okay? The part I struggle with is that if I were to, say, have a church picnic and I were to have a tent, okay? And that was then allowed for the whole weekend, right? We have a process to let, let that happen. Even though I, I, I do believe I see your point in that, but this isn't just open grass. This is a temporary building, and this whole thing is about it being a temporary building. What I'm wondering is, are we letting a detail get in the way of a good idea? So for instance, if just regardless of the fact that it's a temporary building, say it was a tent, right? Pretend the building wasn't there. If a tent was put in that spot, would we be like, well, sure, yeah, we, we just fill out the proper forms, get your alcohol license moved to that area, get your porta potties in place or whatever other rules there are for a temporary alcohol permit, and you're good. So are we letting the fact that there's actually a physical structure that would be operating as a tent get in the way of looking at it from a bigger picture?
So, if they, anybody were to pull a tent permit, which would they have to do in order to, for social events, you know, tent, whatever, the tent is inspected before, after it's erected, and depending on the type of tent erected, it would, if it's not, it's not, has to be non-flammable in order to put a heater under there. Proper ventilation is still required.
Yep.
And if you enclose the sides, you have to have exit lights, fire extinguishers. So, there is, you know, I've been there, I don't, you know, there should be fire extinguishers and exit lights, but those, those requirements would still be put in place for a tent, whether it's temporary or permanent. So-
Yeah.
Those modifications would have to be made even for a tent.
That would make sense to me, right? Because you're going to die just as quickly from carbon monoxide in a tent as you would in, from inside of a building.
Correct.
There's ways to mitigate carbon monoxide, for instance, not heating it. Using electric heat would be another thing. So, what I'm, what I'm, I guess the question I'm asking is, is it out of the question for us to look at the temporary structure under the tent permit, where you would go and you'd inspect it as a tent, and then you would treat it as a tent for that period of time, even though it's not actually something that's assembled and disassembled, just because it's a temporary structure? Do you see what I'm saying? I'm just wondering if we're like-
I don't follow you at all on that.
So-
It's not a temporary structure.
No, that's okay. Don't be sorry.
It's a permanent structure.
Yeah. But under the temporary use permit.
Granted, temporary use.
Yes, you're correct. Yep.
But, but then, is there going to be heat? Is, is there going to be propane heaters?
Right, exactly. That's kind of the whole thing.
So, that, that's where the whole issue lies.
Well, that's what Chief, Chief was talking about, right? E- even if it's a tent permit, right, you still have to look at the heat. You still look at those life safety concerns, which is, which is reasonable. What I'm asking, would it be possible, now, I'm not asking the board-
No.
Because we don't have the authority.
Right.
It's not in our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
I'm asking Administrator Dunks and Chief, is it possible to do that?
I think you're asking them to violate the Commercial Code.
Am I? Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, because I'm not clear on that. Right, because I, I say we allow tents as a temporary structure. Why can't we allow a building with temporary use as a temporary structure? That's my logic.
You can, and, but you would start your 180 clock.
But as a temporary use. So, I'm saying, I'm saying like, when we give a permit to a church, for instance, to put up a tent, that is a temporary structure, right? The only difference between the tent and a building that's there is you have to erect and take down the tent. The building is still there, serving the same purpose, under the same inspections and rules as the tent, you just don't have to put it up and take it down again. And so, I'm wondering if that's within the, within the, I guess, the willingness of you two to consider that as potentially, I guess, temporary-
Demonstrated cause.
Beer, or sales, or whatever, alcohol sales, too, fall on you, is that a place where we can find a middle ground to deal with activities that happen that are, that are honestly a good thing for Swamaco? The meat raffles generate at least 10,000, I, I know you fixed that, I know. They, they generate a lot of money for the citizens of Swamaco. The draft thing, I, I, you guys all kind of have probably a sense on how I feel about the draft and whatever, but, I mean, it matters a lot more to you than it does to me, who is sitting in my basement doing engineering all day. So, I'm just asking, would that be a potential place where we can find a middle ground where you're not feeling like you're violating your role for the public? Because that's what you're doing, right? You're not violating, you're supporting your role for the public health. That's what you're doing. When you enforce a building code, you're standing up for the public health and safety.
Correct.
Right? Exactly. So, that's what you're doing, and so that's why you're drawing the line. You're saying, no, the code has been put together to say this particular language for a particular reason, and I am not going to stand up there and say that the code is wrong. But-
And for that, um-
Just really quickly, but for the temporary permit, okay, continue.
But for the demonstrated cause, I think it would be open for discussion with Joe and I as an open-air shelter. I don't like enclosing this based on the other approvals that were out there. The variance was open-air shelter, the PDD was for open-air shelter, and now we're going one step further and making it an enclosed shelter.
If I may, I think you have the power to put limitations on how that's used. I can't remember where I read it in here, but it essentially said that you could put more restrictions on it as required to get comfortable, because at the end of the day-
Again, as an open-air shelter, we, we could discuss-
Okay.
Some options with that, but the minute it starts to get enclosed, you know, he questioned that enclosure, and he was enclosing it just to keep his, his summer equipment out of the weather. That's why it originally started getting shrink-wrapped.
You can, you can heat an open-air structure with infrared heat.
He can heat, yeah, with the, like they do the outdoor patio at-
Yeah.
And doosies.
Or like, probably in your fire station in the, in the truck base.
But propane-
My question is, if I take the metal off of that structure, take the metal roof right off of it, and I put up a tarp over top of that, would it be considered a patio then? Because not, it's just sides.
That was the discussion to begin with, that you could-
So, if I put a tarp over it, I'm under a patio license. That's my question. If I take the metal roof off of that pavilion, and I put a tarp over it, now I follow the tent restriction. Because I can remove the tarp at any time. It just stays on the trusses, no different than a pergola.
It's no longer under the Commercial Code as a permanent structure, and would not need to be evaluated as such. But you had issues with durability and whatnot of that cover.
I don't have the issues with durability. What I have an issue with is trying to put a tent up out there. The chili took off, we did. That tent was blowing around, and there was pipes flying. I mean, if you're talking about public health and safety, I'm telling you, man, you're looking up the wrong tree. Because if a big gust of wind comes across that bay at 50 miles an hour, someone's going to get hurt. And I can't afford the liability of that.
Within that section of goal.
I'm not sure how the fire code would look at the cover on that and what you put under it. I assume it would be under-
We live in Swamaco. I tried to build a better place out there and a place for people to do stuff and make it look good, because I'm in a low-rent district. These people have money, and they want to be in somewhere nice. Everything else can get built up. I understand there's codes and there's ordinances, but we've heard many times, Sky, you've said it, no, we're in Swamaco. Everybody's got a, you know, a little something where you got to give a little. So, would you want to be under a tent?
Are you talking to me?
Anybody.
Well, my-
Any tent or a pavilion.
It sounds to me like if we could just get past the heated area, you, you have your metal roof, you put infrared heat in, which is, it heats the people below, it doesn't actually create any kind of a CO2 or carbon monoxide. You have a comfort, and then essentially, when you have a special event, maybe Chief Bertler or Administrator will be good with it. And that's, that's, that's how I'm imagining this. Whether that's right or not, I mean, that's up to you two.
I got a question. I, I got a question. I, I, you know, I'm getting confused. We've been here a long time, going at this longer than any other item, and I'm confused. So, the, this item, when I looked this up on the agenda, this says to me, request from Trustee Netto to discuss Ticks Harbor Light's temporary structure, zoning Administrator Dunks to take that conversation. Why are we here? What are we talking about this for? Are we talking about this, because this is the Commercial Code for the State of Wisconsin. We're powerless to change this. We cannot change this. We can interpret it maybe, potentially differently, 180 consecutive or 180 whenever, but our, so we can't change the fact that it's 180 days. We can't. If there's going to be a change in the structure, you're going to take a roof off and put a tarp up, or you're going to put a tent up. That's a different discussion, and that's not part, I don't see that as part of this right here. I have a question for you, Mr. Netto. So, so in terms of, when did you open last year? When did you, when was, to the best of your recollection, when was the first time?
We've made six, May 5th.
Wasn't your last day November 8th? If we backed it out.
6/3. It was the beginning of May.
May 5th, and the last day was November?
6/3.
That he was allowed to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, when you talk about consecutive days, that's including weekdays, not just weekends. It's just consecutive calendar days. And that was May 5th through November 6th. If you were to open on April 24th, which is the draft day, 24th through the 25th, you would be open through September 25th?
No.
As, six months?
October.
Yeah.
Would it be October? Did I count that wrong?
Yeah, because we're only backing up.
So, you would be open through October 25th. As it stands right now, using that, you would be open through October 25th. So, there's, there's an issue here of, what, two weeks? 14 days? Right?
If that's all it's about is the draft, yeah.
So, it, the issue here is the use of this building for 14 days. You already have the use for 180 consec, 180 consecutive days. There's a 14-day issue here.
Well, really, the issue comes down to, I'm closed on Monday. There's 52 weeks in a year, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, are the days I'd like to open the pavilion and actually get use out of it. That's 156 days, which leaves me 24 weeks of picking another day or a special event, giving the village a minimum of a two-week, a week, two weeks? Here's what I'm going to do out there. This will count as one of my days. But every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, would like to utilize it. You know, I'm bringing people into town with meat raffles. I, I have other big events that I'm not going to say. Some of you do know what I'm talking about here. I mean, if we're talking about bringing business into Swamaco, I'm doing the best I can. And if I can't utilize the pavilion, why would I build it? I'm not going to build a structure with that kind of money and put the coolers and everything else in it. I'm already limited on time.
And you were limited on that time? The, the 180 consecutive day letter was out before you pulled the permit to put the roof on. So, you knew the conditions before you ever pulled the permit for that roof. And they weren't a problem at that point.
No, but I guess what bothers me the most is, from day one, it was a pavilion. From day one, when I, we, Sean and I came in and we looked at this, it was going to be a pavilion. Then, I should have been told that it's only 180 days. I had poured a slab and poured sonnet tubes and built a tent that was strapped down to sonnet tubes, and it wouldn't move. That doesn't fall on me.
Well, what we have before us, though, again, is backing up to what President Van Rossum said. What we have before us is what we have to deal with, not this other stuff. That can come back to us, but this focus is this. And the focus is, because it's a permanent structure, that it can't be enclosed, and it can't be with the propane heaters. That's, that's what we have going. Because we, we void that. We, we try to get away from that, we're violating the state code. So, that's, that's what's before us.
It still says, except, you, you may grant that extension for demonstrated cause. Now, because, and that extension during the draft, a little bit of an extension so that you could at least get through Halloween.
And I understand what you're saying, but then, my point is-
It says, except.
We, but, but I'm not going to be the one to cast a vote for that. And, and someone gets sick or dies from carbon monoxide, or even worse, there's some type of an explosion because it's enclosed.
We, we don't have the authority to, anyway. We can't cast a vote. We can't make a decision. We can't, right now, look at anyone in this room and say, we would like you to grant this temporary extension. We would like you to entertain the temporary extension. We have no authority to do that. That authority, by the State of Wisconsin and the Commercial Code, is given to Mr. Dunks and Chief Bertler. So, I already heard, I already heard Zoning Administrator Dunks directly speak to you and say, you know, if there is a circumstance for an extenuating circumstance, that's something we could potentially entertain. He's not hurt, did you say that, or did I not?
I basically said we would consider, but as an open-air structure.
So, so there is consideration being given to maintain this or to keep this open, you know, for the draft as an open-air structure. You know, in, in the State of Wisconsin, the campsite at the, at the new zoo is completely rented out for that weekend already. And those people are going to be living outside, too, all these camping areas. So, there is precedent, the, the entire, the whole draft scenario, the majority of it, is outside, you know? So, so if there is an outside element, you know, can you have bonfire out there?
Nope.
Okay, well, that, that ends that.
Well, what would you have to do to make it an open-air structure?
Well, it is an open-air structure.
Oh, okay.
Just take the sheeting off, right?
Take the metal off the roof and put an ugly tarp up there.
Well, open air, does that include, I mean, there's plastic or something to-
Well, it, right now, the plastic over the open-air portion is eliminating it as an open-air structure.
That's what I was thinking you were referring to, then. Okay, thank you.
So, if there's no plastic on the windows and there's a metal roof on it, is it still considered an open-air structure?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to move your metal roof. You can leave your metal roof, but you got to take the plastic off the windows.
And then I'm sitting with $100,000 worth of equipment.
I'm saying for the draft, for purposes of utilization for the draft. Not permanently. I mean, if you're using it for storage, you're using it for storage. Am I right? Am I misstating that?
That would be my expectation, that it would remain an open-air structure through any of our approval.
The draft period.
So, Sky, what is it that we would do then at this point? I mean, is there, because we've already covered the fact that this isn't a decision that the board would make, right? So, we're basically just facilitating conversation between the two approving officials
And the owner of the establishment.
Right, okay. So, I mean, at this point, what is it that we would do next as far as, like, would we present a motion to stay that we would be, you know, encouraging Chief Bertler and Administrator Dunks to discuss the demonstrated cause position or the special event option to allow for this exception for the NFL Draft portion? But it doesn't necessarily speak to what would happen in 2026 or moving forward, for example. We would be talking about it right now.
I, I mean, I'm a one person. I mean, if somebody on the board wanted to offer a motion, they certainly could. I would be hesitant to, to offer that personally. I would be very hesitant to offer that motion, provide a yay to that motion, or second that motion, because it appears coercive, at the very least. I mean, it's, it's detailed by, again, it's detailed by the state statute, who has the authority to do this. And, and I, I, when you talk about a work environment where we have some sort of authority with regard to Chief Bertler, you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
It could be seen as coercive.
Gotcha. Okay, understood.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's a good opinion. And my thoughts on this is, the reason we're here is to try to find maybe, maybe a path that hasn't been considered, that's acceptable and people would be okay with. Not telling anybody to do anything.
I would have seconded that as it was, because it's only asking them to take a look at the situation.
I will offer a motion then. I will offer a motion to request Administrator Dunks and Chief Bertler to review the demonstrated cause portion and the application for special event to allow for NFL Draft at Ticks Bar.
Second.
So, there has been a motion offered on the floor. That motion has been offered and seconded. Is there questions in this? Go ahead. Discussion, questions? Is there questions in discussion or questions?
Well, discussion within, before there's a vote. So what are you specifically looking for in your motion for the two gentlemen to?
I would like, I'm, I'm just asking them to discuss the possible application of the demonstrated cause for the extension to the 180 days for 2025 or, and/or to allow it to fall under, if, if it would even be applicable, to fall under the application for a special event. If we weren't looking to extend the 180 days, we'd just allow him to open for that particular period for the NFL draft and be given an exception in that regard, just for the 2025 draft, and then his 180 days would be separate from that special event.
So to encapsulate, you're looking, you've offered a motion, and the motion has been seconded, and that motion is to refer back to Chief Bertler and zoning administrator Dunks for them to review special circumstances in terms of extending the 180 days for Ticks Harbor Lights Bar. Is that the proper encapsulation? Okay, questions and discussion?
I don't see what there is to review because I, I can't say.
We'll have to vote on the motion, though. But just, do you have a, do you have a comment with regard to the motion in particular? Because we have to vote on the motion. There's been a motion made and seconded.
No, just go ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to make one comment, and then I'm going to call for the vote. I find this, this is, this is about that far from reprehensible. This is coercion of village employees. This motion, in my opinion, is coercion of village employees. The issue that we've just spent this much time, you know, discussing a single issue that affects no other bar in the entire village of Swamaco is a disservice to the citizens of Swamaco. And frankly, your actions up here today exemplify, and I thought we had gotten this somewhat squared away. You're continually moving forward with things that affect only your bar and is not looking out for the best. You do not get to comment, you are recused. Are continually focused on your bar, and you represent the citizens of Swamaco. This is no different than if I was making a decision and pushing for something in my own yard, or you were, or you were, or anyone else. So I find this about this far from reprehensible. But there is a motion, and that motion has been seconded. And this is still a democratic organization, and we will vote on that. I would like a roll call, please.
Can I make a comment first?
Yes.
Thank you. So I, I respectfully disagree with part of what you said. There was already a statement earlier on where there was some uncertainty as to what a demonstrated cause was. There was, there was some concern as well as that, like, it's under construction, you continue on. All the motion's asking is for staff to look at that definition. There is no one here that is going to look one way or the other, based on what you guys come back with. That's clear. You may come back, no, that's pretty clear in the code. Demonstrated cause means it's during construction and it doesn't apply here. Okay. Right? And the reality is, is you two make the decision. There's no consequences to whatever decision you make. I hope you understand that we would never do that. I can't think of a time where I've ever went to you guys and said, no, you look at it my way or the highway. I've never done that. I'm not doing it tonight.
I'm not concerned one bit.
As you shouldn't be.
Okay, last chance for any comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Andrews.
Nay.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto is recused. Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Nay.
Okay, thank you.
President Van Rossum, can you submit a actual request? I don't know that we've ever received a request for staff to act on. You just brought this to a board meeting. So there really hasn't been an opportunity for staff to formally review it?
I could ask for it.
Okay.
Right after November.
We'll submit something in, in writing, and you can look at it.
Would you like to return to your seat so we can adjourn this evening's meeting or finish the rest of the agenda items? Item number eight this evening is the discussion on future agenda items. Is there anyone who has future agenda items that they would like to discuss? At a future time, anyone? None? Okay. Then I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I would like to make the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Romes has offered the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. All in favor of adjourning this evening's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you.